Are we ready?
Sure, yes. That's right, we're just a little bit faster.
Good evening, everyone. Thank you for joining us at the year's last meeting of the Hyde Park Planning Board. Please refresh your idea and knowledge of where the exit is on case of emergency and now join me as we salute the American flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. The first item on the agenda is the Innett-Belfield. The applicants have submitted new plans for some, we will call, overall minor changes. It's significant enough to the building itself that both Ms. Moss, Ms. Palagaro, Mr. Logan, myself, all agreed that we needed something for the record. So they're submitting a plan. We are not going to be setting a public hearing because Ms. Moss intends to waive it. Or recommend waiver. We didn't really have much public comment anyway. Welcome back. Gentlemen, let me turn it over to you.
All right, thank you very much. Larry Boudreau with the Chasing Companies on behalf of Tom O'Rourke and Belfield. I'm here with Chris Laporta and we have the submittal which we hurried up and submitted yesterday and did some follow-up today. So thank you for all of that because you might have been late on some of the stuff. Also want to thank you for the opportunity to meet with you last Thursday to help give us direction on how to move forward with this. At that meeting, Bill Hoy presented the changes and the changes that we have here today are a result of VE or value engineering. They're trying to take some costs out of the project. So what that led to is eliminating the pool. By eliminating the pool, we were able to pick up four additional units. So instead of 133, we're at 137 and that's really the change. By doing that, the footprint changes a little bit and the elevations changes. So in your packet, we pulled together several things and I can go over them here. And we have the PDFs of all the submittals, so we'll try to get through that. But the first thing that I'd like to show is the site plan that shows the changes. That's the amended site plan that we did. Okay, so this is the site plan that was approved with... And what we're trying to show here is the big picture of the changes. Starting to the left, yeah, not yet, starting to the left and going to the right or the north and going to the south. This site plan, unlike the approved one, is locating the mechanical units. So you can see that black square there, that's an add right there. And what we're doing is we're putting a fence around it, which we detailed in the site plan amendment. We showed a six-foot-high fence and I can explain that in a little bit. The blue line there is the new footprint and the approved footprint is the black line. So you can see how it changes on the left there, how it comes in. And then that octagonal shape there gets a little bit bigger. That's actually the bar area, public space area in the lobby, off the lobby. And then again, you can see as you go to the right here. Chris, can you pin out a little bit?
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah. So again, all the black squares there, all the mechanical equipment, which they're being fenced and landscaped. And you'll see that in the amended site plan. Again, on the right side here, with the pool coming out, the building will shorten up. And so you can see that there. The gross floor area, however, increases a little bit. And the reason why is there's mechanical elements that are added a little bit on each floor going up five floors. So it adds to a net of 1,644 square feet. We did, we were able to get out a short-form EAF where we analyzed the results. But other site plan things, we relocated a transformer generator. And it was on the east side of the fire access road. Now it gets moved to the west side of the fire access road. And again, on the amended site plan, which we'll get to next, you'll see that. We located EV, electric vehicle parking, up in the southeast corner. We don't lose any parking spaces, we just dedicate some to EV parking. And with that, Chris, why don't you go to the amended site plan? I'll zoom in there. So you can start to see there where we're calling out where the changes are done. We're adding landscaping, calling out the fence. Again, dimensionally, the alignment of all the parking, the drive aisles, all that remains unchanged. This one here, five-story hotel, it goes... The gross floor area, again, as I said earlier, went up 1,644 feet. So the new foot, the gross floor area size is 1,6327. Right, perfect. All right, so the architect provided us with his memo of changes to the building, elevations. So we can kind of go through that and then he, you know, so I'll refer you to this from... So why don't you go to the elevation change? And what he did here, and in your packet, he is identifying what the changes are. Can you zoom in there? Okay, so the bottom is the approved and then the top is the amended. And so on the bottom in red, he's showing what was changed. And then on the top, he can show what was added. So this is pretty clear. He's removing part of that balcony, that west balcony. You can kind of see it's all even now when you look up top. So it looks like we added some on the top and took some out on the bottom there. The neatest thing is adding the balcony up top, right there, which isn't on the bottom elevation but is on the top. That has access from the top floor up there. And then to the right where you see the green, the fence was added to screen the mechanical equipment. And there's some landscaping there. This again is the west elevation. And next to this would be a view of the west elevation. And there it is again. So again, on the bottom right, that was where the pool was, that comes out. And again, the bottom right up top, you'll see the screening fence for the mechanical equipment. Bottom right, you'll see where we took out some of the porch area on the bottom there. And of course, the balcony up top. So again, when you look at these elevations, they're essentially the same. Now this is the east or the portico share side, the entrance side. And we did find a, an error or a catch in the elevations where it showed brick. So this elevation comes back and shows the stone. So we have that. Again, to try to take out the cost, these first-floor plates that added a lot of cost on both the right and left or the north and the south sides, they're removed. And you can see the difference when you look at the top. Go to the view. And again, on that lower right, that meeting area was reduced. And the brick area was added to be that Hyde Park stone.
And that's the area that will be occasionally tinted?
The one that?
This is the area that will be occasionally tinted for events that are outgoing?
Yeah, yeah. Bill did discuss that. I asked him what information he could provide and provide for this presentation. And he didn't want to deal with it at this time.
There's no reason to. It's a terrace that you can tent. You'll have to get a building permit for the tenant because that's required now. That's all.
Okay, good. Floor plans, again, you can see that north and the south end of it, which were really just one-story increases in the floor footprint, came out. But again, it does increase because they kind of came up with a unique way from a mechanical that was explained to you that when you look at it, it adds up.
These are little tiny, you can't see them all but these little green areas.
Oh, there they are, yeah.
If you look, they're all over and each, so as they, as you go to floor to floor to floor, they start adding up. And that's how you got the six, because it looks, taking off all the red that you saw down at the bottom.
There they are, yeah.
Yep, they're all, imagine those on each floor. So it's just those that ultimately created the increase.
So that's really, really it. Any questions, we'll be happy to answer.
Consultants, any questions?
I just have one quick question. I'm looking at the area where the transformer is being moved to the other side of the road. And what are the trees that are planted there? CK? I kept trying to look it up. Just curious what's proposed there. There didn't happen to be a landscaping schedule there, so I don't know.
Yeah, we, a team of landscape architects up in Troy, and we asked them what we should put there. And they came up with a nice selection.
Yeah, I tried looking up trees to plant on slopes, right.
I looked it up and it was great. So it would get about that high and it's flowers, blue, blue flowers, it's a deciduous shrub.
So you just don't, okay.
It's a dark night blue beard.
Yeah, yeah, dark night blue beard.
Okay.
Is this the best location when you looked at everything for that? The more I've been thinking about it, it's right by one of your focal points for people to come in and out of. I know this is tight, but there's no way to get it over here behind what the other mechanicals? Because there's no, there are no windows on this side of the building for people to look down to see this. There are, however, multiple windows for people to look down and see above the eight foot.
The location of the electrical room is here and you want to try and get the transformer as close as you can.
So why can't it, so why can't it, why can't it be on the other side? I just think, and I, you know, I sent around an email this afternoon to the planning board members. Again, I'm not the most aesthetic-type person, but...
Yes, you are.
You know, I do think that this is really going to look terrible coming up, coming up, you know, the access road. You know, the fence, the fence isn't even going to hide them. They're going to be like sticking out and I don't, which is, the rectangle is the generator pad?
This one.
That's, that's got to be way undersized. I mean, it's only shown as two foot by seven foot. I mean, there, I mean, have you, have you definitely checked this?
These were given to us by the hotel's MVP.
I can't believe that they're going to have that, that small, like a generator that's going to be fitting on that small of a pad. How high is it going to be, the generator?
I don't know.
I mean, it's going to be pretty high, I'll bet you.
Okay, so the fence there is intended to screen from nine, right?
It will.
The, when we did the site plan, we had it on the other side, 10 feet off the building, just outside the electrical room.
Right, exactly. Perfect.
Right. When everything got in there and what they were doing, it couldn't fit. They did actually discuss going, you know, going down here to the southwest corner. But again, when you get into bringing in primaries...
No, I mean, I understand that. I mean, I believe, I do, I do, I do. I get that. But it's just, I don't know, it's just my opinion that it's just going to be really ugly coming up that access road. And, you know, you're going to, you're going to, you know, see them.
Well, it was located right around here where my cursor is.
Yeah, but you could, but you got, but you got like the building there. You could go and you could kind of plant around it like better. It wouldn't, it wouldn't stick out as much.
These are guest rooms on the first floor and they were concerned about noise and odor from the generator. And, yeah.
You know, I understand. I mean, generators aren't, aren't like pretty, but they have to go somewhere.
Yeah, the porch.
How tall is it?
Well, well, they're, I mean, these things are, you know, they're, they're big.
No, more than that. I bet you they're going to be seven foot, eight foot.
And on top of the pad is a tank, you know, a diesel fuel because that's the backup. And the generator's on top of that.
So guests are still going to be able to see it. You're not hiding it from the guest rooms.
But it won't be five feet from the window.
You also commented on the 13 spruce, but there's no indication on height. So we don't know how tall the transformer is and we don't know how tall the spruce are. Which is also true for the other plantings. We don't have height information. By the transform, which spruce? A dark night blue beard.
Yeah, they're shrubs, but she wants the height on there. I mean, the size.
We just don't have the details.
Three gallon or that kind of thing.
I think they were three by three.
Yeah, yeah, but, but we can get that on there.
As long as we're looking at this area, so there's no fence on this side. As you drive up and as you're sitting on your balcony, you'll see right into this.
Yep.
Am I right?
Well, no, there's no fence in the front.
Because there's no fence in the front. You're screening from Route 9, but all these, those are all little balconies that people are supposed to be sitting from the, I think.
Yep.
Don't you want to screen this out somehow from?
Yeah, the issue is the distance from the fence to the transformer's got to be like five feet.
We placed removable bollards to protect it on this side, but they had to be removable so they could access us if they needed to pull it out.
But what we could do is, you know, plant in this area.
Well, what you could do is, and, you know, I realize that this is going to cost some more money, but you could move the whole thing back further. You'd probably have to put some type of a small retaining wall.
Do you mean further away from the building, closer to the roof?
Yeah, no, no, he's saying push all of this this way.
Yeah, right.
And then put a wall here.
Right.
Well, maybe, yeah, I mean, it's just, I mean, like you're screening it, but it's all screening from like nine. And yet you're going to have, you know, as, as the chairman said, you're going to have all the people that are, you know, looking out from, you know, their rooms. And they're going to be right there in front of them. And we got this nice access road. We're going to have, have trees planted on it and all this kind of stuff. Then all of a sudden, we're going to come upon a generator and, you know, a transformer pad. And I understand what, they have to be, they have to be close to, you know, the building. And, but, I don't know, that's just my opinion that just sticks out.
Somewhat ironically, because it's still five foot from the building, you really wouldn't want to be in those front, on the main floor, in the little porches. But if you're, the higher up you go, you're not going to be able to see down at it because you'd have to look like that. In other words, unless your window's open, people can lean out, they'd have a harder time seeing it. But where it's located to now with the road, it really will be visible.
Larry, I'm not, I'm not sure I was following the rationale for why you couldn't go on the southwest corner where you've put a bunch of other mechanical equipment?
It's a huge cost because of power. You know, the idea is that Central Hudson brings the primary to the trans, I mean, the, yeah, the transformer. And then from there to the mechanical room is the developer's cost. So the idea is you want to get as close to that mechanical room as you can.
I don't know if I'm missing something, but like, I'm just looking, I see like five feet longer to the southwest corner than I do right across the street. I don't, I'm not seeing it. And if you're putting in all of the conduit and stuff before you build the building, it doesn't matter if you're going underneath the road or along the side of the building. I don't see that that's...
So you're talking like in this location?
Yeah.
Yep.
All right, so from here, Chris, where's the mechanical room?
It's going to be the same, close.
There?
It's just a lot right around.
Here or here? Here.
Right there.
Okay, so from here to there versus from here to there?
It's a little longer, but...
I was going to say, I'm not seeing double the length or anything.
It looks like twice the distance, but we, Bill Hoy and his team, they're driving this location. And we've looked at here, we've looked at here. I don't think we looked at anything over here where you can't because of the porch there. And this is what was settled on. And our issue was, we don't know that we can fit it there. And so we asked them to send us the CAD for the exact size. And then the only way we could do it was to grade it. Now, the follow-up on Pete, if we pushed it back and put a small wall in here and then maybe fenced it, the whole thing, I, we would have to check to see if that's, if that is, I haven't seen, have you seen transformers fenced? I can't remember.
You have to check with, you have to check with Central Hudson. I don't, as long as they have access to it, I don't see, I don't see why it's a big deal. I mean, it wouldn't be, well, I don't know, maybe, you know, the gates, the gates would be locked. I don't know. That's, that's up to you guys.
Well, you could, it would still be screened with green, it could still be screened with greens. And the elevation, it will drop if you do what Pete suggested.
Well, we would put the wall in there, hold the elevation.
You would?
Yeah, yeah, we'd have to hold it.
We actually like it if it were to drop down.
If it would drop down, because I'm still not convinced about the trees.
I'd like to know, I'd like to know the height too of the generator because I don't, I mean, I, if we're going to end up keeping it, keeping it there, I think we want the generator to be lower than the fence.
I mean, I keep thinking of the generators I see for some of these big places and they're big.
That's why, that's why I'm shocked that it's only a two-foot by seven-foot pad. But if that's what, if that's what they gave you, but man, that seems small.
That sounds like a household.
Do you know what the KW is on the generator?
We can get a cut sheet on that, Pete.
I mean, we just put in, we just, we just put in a generator for, for a pump station that we're working on, working on now. And it's only a nine KW generator. And I think the pad is like two and a half by four for just a little tiny sewage, sewage pump station. So to power a complete hotel...
This can't be powering the hotel. It'd have to be much bigger than this.
I don't, you know...
I mean, it's probably just a critical...
Do you know what the KW is on the generator?
We can provide the cut sheet on it, the size and all of that. We just simply ask for the pad.
That looks like three by, if it's five feet to the left, that little measurement to the left, says five feet. It's at least 12 feet long, if it's the box to the right.
Well, I measured it, I measured it on, you know, the drawing, but I like the scale unless, you know, the scale of your drawing's wrong. But it's one inch equals 10, 10 feet. And I measured seven, seven feet. So I don't know if, you know, like your scale's wrong on the drawing, maybe? That could be. Honestly, now that like Stephanie says that, you know, the five feet does almost look like it should be 10 feet on the pad. So maybe, you know, your scale's wrong.
I'll check the viewport scale.
And the five foot looks smaller than the 4.5.
It does.
Yeah, it does.
I don't know, whatever.
Well, these dimensions were drawn in AutoCAD. They are what they are.
And we know that they know.
The scale on the drawing might be a little, okay, if the viewport accidentally got shifted, I could check into that.
Well, something's off, that's all. So maybe it is, maybe it is the right size, but, you know, the scale is just wrong on the drawing.
Which makes me really concerned.
Can I just throw in, is, are there any other types of, other than fence or plantings, that you could use to conceal a generator of this size? Like a structure?
You know, these things have to be accessible or tested every month.
Yeah, you get, yeah, you don't, you can't.
Any other comments?
That's it for me.
Any comments from the board additional?
Can these be enclosed on top to a generator as long as it's not locked so they can be serviced?
I'm sorry, what?
Can the, can it be an enclosed?
Can you put a housing over it?
Oh.
Yeah.
I don't know, I never have.
I've never seen one.
I mean, when we have, when we have our generator, well, we have generator service here at the town. And we actually just had our generator serviced down at the office. You know, they service it from, you know, the front. They open up, you know, the panel.
Right, right.
They're able to work on the engine now. If you have to, now if you have to pull, you know, the generator, if there's a problem with it, you got to pull the whole thing. Then you need to have like a crane to hoist it out, so.
Doesn't sound like a good idea.
Yeah, it's probably not.
I guess I'm just concerned that we spent so much time, you know, getting this to look so nice. And now at the 11th hour, we're kind of plopping something in there that's just really going to detract. I mean, every time someone comes in, that's the first thing they're going to see. So if we, if, if we're going to spend the time...
Well, again, the entrance is on the other side.
There's still, there's going to be a lot of traffic on that, that's a main entryway. So, I mean, I just, if we could spend the time to figure out a way to make it less obnoxious looking. Because it's obnoxious looking, I'm sorry.
We'll stay up truthfully rather than obnoxious for tonight. So Larry, I think what you're hearing is we need to get, need to submit a cut sheet for the actual equipment.
Yep.
And also see if there's a way you can do, add any more screening somehow from, so that from the hotel side, you don't see it as much.
Yep.
I think that's the biggest issue is that you've got bollards there.
Okay.
And I understand, but I would think that you could just put a length of fence where maybe something has to be with a gate in it. Doesn't even have to...
Okay, we'll, we'll get the feedback from the...
I think what you're saying is there's also a distance issue between the fence and the structure. But showing right there 4.5, and if that's the only required distance, maybe you can, as Pete said, get it a little bit closer to nine so you have 4.5 feet on the other side. I know you don't want to have a fence right along the road because that will invite damage.
Right.
And what type of fence is it?
White, vinyl, I believe.
Yeah.
It's proposed everywhere.
ABC, right?
Yep, this is eight foot in this area and it's six foot around the mechanicals by the building.
Larry, how much, how much grade change is there on that slope? Do you know?
I would, well, those are twos or ones. One, two, three, four, five. Yeah, that's five, six feet.
That's about, that's about right.
Yeah.
Being out there.
Any way you could excavate that slope down so you're not coming out with it and kind of offset that height? So you make your path, you build a wall to hold it back so you're not building a big wall to hold up your, your grade? And then you can kind of hide it in that slope?
Right, so, so we have the message. We got to come up with a better job, you know, with that.
Instead of maybe changing the location, that might...
Yeah, yeah.
I had a quick question also, another landscape question on the corner.
Okay.
The southwest corner. You mentioned, I'm not familiar... The southwest corner. Um, you mentioned, I, I'm not familiar with the tufted haregrass. I know what boxwoods are, but again, there's no sizing or information that.
Okay.
Shows it relative to the fence. So I'd appreciate.
That we can do.
That sounds easy, right?
Yeah, yeah. We had six hours to pull this together, so.
And actually, if I can just throw that in, throw in, there's a landscape sheet for the set. So you'll probably have to update that.
No, 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 we didn't want to. This is an add to it.
Yeah, we just want to do an amendment with this.
Right. But we can, we can get all that on there.
Any other questions, colleagues? Okay, we have a resolution where we're going to refer this to D.C. planning. We may hear some of the same comments from them, but I'm not thinking we will, uh, except for maybe the location of the transformer. I think that the rest was minor inducted. We'll probably get no comments back. Who has this resolution?
I do.
Thank you.
Resolution referring the application to the Dutchess County Department of Planning and Development, the Inn at Bellfield, December 18th, 2019, resolution number 20, 2017-04J. Whereas, now therefore be resolved that the planning board hereby refers the amended project to the Dutchess County Department of Planning and Development for report and recommendation thereon pursuant to section 239M of the general municipal law.
Is there a second? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
The motion carries. I was just asked a question, so we'll reiterate it. Who's the flag? And this is, they're using the Marriott, I believe, reservation system, but it will be its own flag, correct? Is that the right way to describe it? Sam, just the engineer, Sam, just the engineer.
Yeah, I'm not entirely sure. Um, it's a, it's a very special hotel.
Yes, the sign that we approved says the Inn at Bellfield and below that, a Marriott Residence Hotel.
Right, right.
Yes, these are extended stay.
One of, one of three in the country.
Oh.
It's very, yeah.
Okay, so it is a unique.
Yeah.
Fairly unique situation. Okay. Um, thank you, gentlemen.
We'll see you.
At the, yes, you can, welcome to stay with us. And we'll, uh, put this back on for the 18th to consider approval. If you can get us some information in the meantime.
19?
19, 15, 15, sorry.
So, so it's the 15th and we would have to submit by when to?
A week beforehand? Five days beforehand?
All right, good. That'll give us a chance.
I know you, you could check with the owners of the hotel too about our concerns, so.
Will do.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
The next item on the agenda is a request from PLT Storage Yard for an extension of time to meet the conditions for signature of the site plan. Uh, as you know, there's some ongoing issues over at this site. Uh, do you want to come up and say anything? Okay, you don't have to. Young Mr. Gleason is here in case anybody, anybody has questions. But yes.
In case anybody can't see it on the space.
But, uh, you all.
Which Mr. Gleason's son?
Tom.
Okay, Tom.
Does anybody have any questions about the application, request?
Nope, no.
Who has this resolution? Yes?
I guess I only, I just want to know is, how is everything going? Is it?
We're still going back and forth with the insurance company.
Oh, so insurance, yeah, okay.
As well as, as you guys, wherever you could bring your water, water sprinkler system.
Oh, okay.
So the elections slowed us down a little bit as people have the priorities and now holidays. Uh, so we are through Dutchess County Water and Waste Order and now working with the town, the city, or the district department as well to bring water up. So we're kind of working a lot to the facets and trying to make sure we fix everything on paper before we actually.
Which makes sense.
It does.
Part of the issue with the insurance companies, I understand it, is the building was kind of overbuilt, if that makes any sense.
Yep, it was, it was.
Back then, and they're more or less, the insurance companies more or less saying it's a standard building of this height, materials, et cetera, not reflecting all the extra value that was added in originally. So. Any other questions?
It's just like a fortress.
It wa, that's what I mean. Who has this resolution?
I do. Resolution granting extension of the time to satisfy the conditions of site plan and special use permit approval of PLT Storage Yard reconstruction, resolution 2019-19B. Whereas, seven times, now therefore be it resolved that the planning board hereby grants the applicant a 90-day extension of time in which to satisfy the conditions of site plan and special use permit approval to and including May 3rd, 2020.
Second?
All in favor?
Aye.
The motion carries. Good luck. Happy holidays.
Yep.
Next item on the agenda is Nichols Oxygen Property. There's also a request to extend the time in which to meet conditions. Cynthia tells me that they're really close.
They're really close, right?
It's dealing with DOT toward the end here.
Yeah, and still, Mr. Nichols called me today. It's his birthday. And.
Happy birthday, Mr. Nichols.
And he did not get the letter yet from.
But that's really all they're waiting on is the letter, right?
The sign off.
That's it.
So then they could put it to paper.
Anybody have any other questions about this application?
No.
Who has this resolution?
I do. Resolution granting extension of time to satisfy conditions of site plan approval in the Nichols Oxygen Property, resolution number 2019-07C. Now therefore be it resolved that the planning board hereby grants the applicant a 90-day extension of time in which to satisfy the conditions of the site plan and special use permit approval to and including March 15th, 2020.
Second?
All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. We have two waivers that have both been recommended by the zoning administrator for, waiver request I should say, to grant the waivers. Uh, one is on Doty Drive. It's in the overlay district because it's actually adjacent to the Vanderbilt Estate and to Historic Cemetery on Doty. That's, I believe you have to be a Stoughtonburg heir and wish to be interred there. But it's not visible from the Vanderbilt Estate directly nor from the river. The other one for the Belucis is for a generator. This is on Mansion Drive. It is not visible from the river either. Anybody have any questions on either, who has each?
How large is the generator?
Yeah, right.
What color is the generator?
Who would like to?
I have the first one.
How big is the pad?
Okay, Winifred Farley, 10 Doty Avenue, site plan waiver. Uh, town code section 108-9.4C2. Whereas, a request for site plan waiver has been made to the Town of Hyde Park Planning Board by Winifred Farley for replacement windows on a single-family home requiring a building permit. And whereas, time seven, therefore be it resolved that the Town of Hyde Park Planning Board hereby waives site plan requirements for the proposed changes as described in the building permit received by the Building Department November 12th, 2019, and per the request of the planning board dated December 4th, 2019. Second?
Second?
All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. The next waiver request for the Belucis?
I do. Uh, Belucci, site plan waiver, December 18th, 2019, resolution 2019-62. Whereas, an application requesting a waiver of site plan has been made to the Town of Hyde Park Planning Board by Nicholas and Katrina Belucci on December 11th, 2019, for property located at 37 Mansion Drive in the Town of Hyde Park. And whereas, 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 now therefore be it resolved that Town of Hyde Park Planning Board hereby waives the site plan requirements for the file entitled Belucci regarding the specific request as submitted in the building permit application dated November 22nd, 2019.
Second?
All in favor?
Aye.
The motion carries. It's my great pleasure to introduce the next resolution. Also, just as a housekeeping note, I was reappointed for another term Monday night.
Congratulations.
Congratulations.
Yay.
Just couldn't, just couldn't say no, huh?
Going for 21 years to just 14. Um, I'll note that that means that I can actually vote on the resolution itself now too because I'm already appointed for the next year. Resolution designated planning board vice chairperson for the year 2020. I can't believe that we're both doing this other year. Uh, resolution 19-E, not be resolved that Ann Dexter be designated the vice chairperson of the planning board authorized to conduct meetings with the planning board and to sign final plats, site plans and related documents, including invoices and correspondence on behalf of the planning board in the absence of the chairperson. Make a second?
Second?
All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. Thank you again, Ann.
Thank you.
And we have two resolutions to reappoint our consultants. Anybody have any questions before I read them?
No.
Nope.
Resolution 19-F, to reappoint Rodenhausen Shaw Palagoro as legal consultant for 2020. Whereas, whereas, now therefore be it resolved, the planning board hereby authorizes the chairperson to sign said contract to engage Rodenhausen Shaw Palagoro for the year 2020.
Second?
All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. Next one, resolution 19-G, to reappoint CPL team as planning and engineering consultants for 2020. Whereas, whereas, now therefore be it resolved, the planning board hereby authorizes the chairperson to sign said contract to engage CPL team for the year 2020.
Second?
All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
Thank you guys for agreeing. Uh, any other business? Make a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second?
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
And my Christmas is, is complete.
Yes, yes. With the sweet sasquatch.